Would you please stand for the pledge of the flag? I'd like to welcome everyone here this evening. It's really good to see a good turnout this evening. We have a lot on the agenda. I'd also like to welcome Andrew Gray, the administrative.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Welcome to 20 Town.
Thank you.
Let the records reflect the members that are present. Commission members should receive the draft minutes August 25th, 2025. Is there any corrections or additions to those minutes?
None, as seen.
Entertained a motion? Bill?
Second.
Second by Dan. Any further discussion? Motion, sign of vouchancy and aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Carrie, thank you. Delegation and action items for tonight. First item, 520 East Ballmer Street McDonald concept site plan presentation and review the PZA, PZA A, case 25, 233. Andrew, do you want to start us off on this?
Well, sure. Gentlemen from Bowler Engineering, the developer's engineer here this evening to share the concept plan with us. We've been chatting with them off and on for the last couple of months to get to this point, so hopefully you'll start to see the image on your screen in front there in just a moment, and I'll turn things over to a gentleman from Bowler.
Awesome, thank you, and good evening. My name is Brandon Rao with Bowler. I'm here with Johnny Listko as well from Bowler, and we represent McDonald's. We're here to present to you proposed McDonald's redevelopment of their property over at 520 East Baltimore Street. Subject property is approximately 35,000 square feet or .8, eight tenths of an acre in size and is located in a tiny town shopping center. Property's owned general business, it's in the general business zoning district. The proposed improvements include raising and rebuilding the existing store, which is just under 6,000 square feet in size. There are currently two vehicular access points along the, as the plan lies, southern side of the layout with one-way circulation going counterclockwise around the building. And there are currently 34 parking spaces of the property. The new building will be 4,181 square feet, so approximately a little under 1,800 square foot smaller than the current building. Site access will remain relatively the same, and site circulation will remain relatively the same, circulating one-way, counterclockwise around the building. We will be proposing 21 parking spaces, and we also have a, what we call a side-by-side drive-through, which is similar to what's there today where you have two order points to the drive-through. The improvement we're making with this, though, is there will be two queuing lanes stacking up leading into the drive-through, so a little bit more queuing and stacking space than is provided today. Pedestrian connectivity will also be improved. Currently, there's no connectivity from the store to the frontage, either frontage along the internal Genevieve on the planned right side, which is the access to the shopping center, or out to East Baltimore Street along the frontage. So we will be providing ADA access from the store to the pedestrian frontage. Landscape and building setbacks will be met, and landscaping will meet the city's landscape requirements. There is an area along the frontage of East Baltimore Street that wanted to just point out that through our research identified that on the plat that was quartered for the property back in the 80s, SHA reserved the right for a tentative, what they call tentative future right-of-way. When uncovering this, we reached out to the SHA District 7 office to ask what's their intention for this, and we spoke with Anish Thomas, who's the regional manager of District 7 Access Management. He indicated that SHA has no plans for this right now, but would like to reserve the right in the future to be able to take it. And his recommendation was, don't put any hard improvements in that area. So you'll see there's a green space that's provided along the frontage of East Baltimore Street for that reason. So we are not putting any, the building's not located in it, the dumpster enclosure's not located in it, access drive and the drive-through improvements are not located in it. So we've pulled that out in the event that SHA wants to take that in the future. From a traffic standpoint, trip generation-wise, the building is smaller. So based on the traffic group's trip generation calculations, there would be a reduction in the number of trips to and from the property. With that, we'll have a lesser impact on the road network and surrounding road network. From a parking standpoint, I mentioned that there was 21 parking spaces proposed. City ordinance requires eating and drinking establishments to park at either one space per 100 square feet or one space per three seats, whichever is greater. That would lead to a 42-space parking requirement at this location. We are seeking a variance, tentatively, on the October 22 BZA hearing date. We did have the traffic group complete a parking study, parking study of the existing operations. They found that at the peak time, they studied several days, I believe it was Thursday, Friday, and Saturday at different times, and they found that there were only 15 spaces used on the current space, on the current property, at the peak time. Additionally, they then analyzed the adjacent tiny town shopping center and looked overall, and during that same peak time, just want to make sure I get the numbers right, only 37 spaces were occupied out of 359 total spaces on the adjacent shopping center. So based on that, the conclusion was that since McDonald's is being rebuilt and already exists, there wouldn't be a significant increase in demand for the proposed improvements, and the new site plan of 21 spaces would still satisfy the parking needs for the use. Deliveries will be made by what we call WB62 tractor-trailers. They're 65-foot-long trucks, pretty standard for McDonald's. They are able to circulate, given the proposed improvements, able to circulate the site to provide deliveries from a trash and dumpster location. The proposed dumpster location, as you're looking at the plan, is in the upper-left corner. It is similar to the location that it is today, pulled back a little bit again because of that tentative right-of-way that we wanted to respect and pull further away from East Baltimore Street. We did want to note that this location, the dumpster enclosure, is located in a sewer and water easement that benefits the city. We, in speaking with staff, through our understanding, the planning commission is able to, I guess, provide no objection to that location should you find it suitable. There are several notes added to the concept plan, if you have it in front of you, or if you can squint on the screen in the bottom-right corner. Basically, the gist of those notes is that McDonald's acknowledges that this is located in an easement. City has the right to remove, relocate, impact that enclosure should they need to repair the sewer line that lies within that easement, and any repair costs to that dumpster enclosure would be at McDonald's cost. From a signage standpoint, the existing freestanding sign that is at the corner of the shopping center entrance on the McDonald's property will remain. There is going to be new building signage with the new building, obviously, as well as improved wayfinding and directional signage around the property. We are seeking some variance relief for the signage. Get into specifics if you have questions on that, but plan on discussing that with the BZA at the October 22 meeting. And finally, stormwater management, certainly will be provided to meet state and county requirements. The anticipated limited disturbance is about .78 acres. We are actually reducing the impervious area coverage on the site, but plan on providing proprietary filtering structures to provide water quality management for the property. And then the property is actually drains to a, I'll call it a regional facility that's on the other side of Antrim, near the car dealership. We are reducing impervious, so our total flow going to that facility will be reduced, but that facility will continue to manage the two- and 10-year storm events for our proposed improvements. So with that, certainly open up to questions or discussion. Appreciate your time this evening and look forward to working with you and staff on the project.
I had a couple of questions.
All right.
Excuse me. The, I've got questions about the double drive-through with the parking. I've seen at other McDonald's where that becomes a choke point, that lane there. What is the dimension between the second drive-through lane and the parking lines there?
Sure, so basically where you would have the free-drive aisle to drive?
Yeah.
That is 18 feet in width.
And?
That exceeds the 15-foot minimum requirement.
I was going to say, are tractor-trailers going to be able to do that if you've got people up in the drive-through?
That's a fair question. So deliveries are timed for off-hours that would not occur while the, we have, drive-through stacking is occurring.
And I had one, the other question that I had was, you're looking to, it looks like you're looking to basically increase drive-through capacity. How does that result in fewer trips?
So increased drive-through capacity, maybe I misspoke if I misled you there. It increases, or, sorry, decreases the time it takes to operationally get through the drive-through, is the purpose of the side-by-side. So by that, they're able to alternate the drive-through lanes and allow for a quicker progress through.
The, the only reason I bring it up is that you're reducing the seating capacity in the restaurant, so you're expecting more drive-through, I would expect, to make up for that. So I'm still, it just didn't add up that there's going to be, that this is going to result in fewer trips. That seems like that would be a money loser for you.
Fair question. The, and I could, I can come back when we're back and certainly speak to that in further detail and talk with the traffic group about those numbers, but I know they use the ITE to calculate those, but fair question.
I'm good.
Couple of questions. So we talked about the mobile order sign and the delivery blade sign. So looking at, I think it's C and D on your map. Are they mounted on the wall?
They are.
Is there a thickness to them, or?
So C and D, you said?
Yeah, Charlie and Delta.
Yes, so there is a thickness, and it's a magnitude of a fraction of an inch.
Okay.
From that standpoint.
So it would be on the wall when you're walking through on the sidewalk, but it's not sticking out from the walls six inches or so? It's?
So it is, so maybe, so it is a sign that is placed perpendicular to the, as you would travel on the sidewalk.
Okay.
But at an elevation above?
Okay, about seven feet, 7.3 feet?
Seven, yeah.
Okay, and that's one of the areas you're looking for variance on?
Correct.
Yeah. Who is okay? I think I'm okay with everything else here.
I have a question on the, your handicap parking, being that close to the entrance coming in where your drive-through is. Why wouldn't it be on the other side so when people back up, they could see what's coming instead of what's coming in from Geneva Drive?
Sure, yeah, a couple considerations. One, this is the parking spaces that are closest in proximity to the store entry. So as you move it further, if you move the ADA spaces further, plan north towards East Baltimore Street, you get further away, and then you also continue to conflict with stacking locations on the drive-through.
I was referring to the opposite side.
Oh, the opposite side.
On the exit.
Gotcha. So on that side is where the drive-through stacking is, and there's no door on that side of the building. So there's three windows to pick up on that side of the building.
So when the people are waiting for their food, who's bringing, how are they getting out, how's your, how's it being delivered to the people that's in the waiting lane, waiting aisles?
In the?
Since there's no door on that side of the building.
Oh, there's three pickup windows. So there's three windows, a pay, and then a primary pickup, and then a secondary pickup.
But if you're in the parking space, you're not next to the window.
Right.
Maybe I'm mis-
There's a door, not on the side of the drive-through, but there is a door in the front of the building where that those workers, the crew members, would come out. So it's the very south part, portion of the building.
Sorry, I misunderstood. So your question.
Way I presented it.
Yeah, so you feel, you're having 40, 40 to 50 chairs. Do you feel nine dedicated parking spots enough?
Correct.
That's all you have, nine? Okay.
There's 21 total spaces.
Those on the left side are all dedicated for ab people, the order.
There's mobile order or?
You have nine actually for the people inside.
On the right side, if you're looking at it.
Correct, on the right side, which is where the store entry is, yep.
Are you going to have a play area in this?
No, no more play area.
Play area is gone. Play area is now gone, right?
That's right, in this prototype.
I was going to say, and it's going to be the minimalist brown box style of the new McDonald'ses?
It is not going to be as large as the one that's currently there, yeah.
I was going for what it looked like, but okay.
Oh, gotcha. It is their new prototype, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a couple, and some of the ones were already hinted on, but for first comment, in the traffic, the traffic information, the traffic study that was provided, it mentioned that in case of overflow parking, the adjacent tiny town shopping center could handle increased parking requirements. With that being said, can the adjacent shopping center lot accommodate that overflow parking, taking into consideration the existing uses that are already located at the tiny town shopping center? And if so, would there be a, some type of parking easement with the shopping center with McDonald's Corporation?
Yeah, so to answer the first part of that question, I think the parking study identified 359 total spaces in the tiny town shopping center. At the peak time that there were, peak time of parking on the McDonald's lot, there was only 37 total, if I recall correctly, occupied spaces of those 359. So there certainly is an excess amount of parking spaces in the greater shopping center.
Correct. I guess when I'm looking at that, if you took all the uses in that shopping center and applied the parking regulations per the city code, and the, all the, because all those, those uses in that shopping center have a required amount of parking per code, so with adding all those up, even though there's excess parking spaces, which I totally understand, but would the, for lack of a better term right now, but an allocation of spots in tiny town shopping center be accounted for with taking every use that's there? And would there still be enough parking for McDonald's per the code?
Understood. I don't know the answer to that, but what I can say, based on what the traffic group who prepared that parking activity study indicated, is that the 21 spaces on the property are enough to satisfy the needs for the McDonald's.
Okay.
The adjacent shopping centers, excess parking is called icing on the cake.
Okay.
Is the way I understand that.
And also, from what Commission Member Gardner mentioned, sort of hints on what I saw too, in city code section 205, 37C6, parking is calculated for the gross floor area of the amount of seats, seats or whichever is greater, seats or floor area. So the area is 4,118 square feet, which would be 41.81 spaces or 42, correct? And then 50 seats, which would be 16.66 or 17 parking spaces. And like, as you mentioned, you have the courier parking, curbside pickup parking, and the reserved parking for the drive-through. So that removes several parking spaces from that total of 21 parking spaces. I just want to make sure with that, there's only a certain amount then left over, because when you're thinking of the parking spaces, which are for that building, and you're having parking spaces in the lot that are reserved for other non-restaurant, inside-restaurant activities, and I just want to make sure that when you have, when you take into consideration people who work there, who I'm, would be assuming would all bring a car, and then customers who are coming, that there would be an adequate number of parking spaces to accommodate all the patrons and employees to that McDonald's.
Understand the question, and it's a great question, and I'll talk to the McDonald's team as well as the traffic group about that exact question.
Thank you, thank you. And also, I've only been at the city here for two days, but after reviewing the file that Jim showed me from November of 2024, the front of the building was originally facing East Baltimore Street. And with, the layout was modified, so now the back of the building is facing East Baltimore Street. And I'm just trying to get a little bit of clarity of why the front of the building's not facing the street.
Yeah, so similar to House Oriented Today, the front of the building faces inward to the shopping center, integrate better into the shopping center, integrate more to where individuals are coming from, directly from the adjacent access roads. Further, pulling the road, or excuse me, pulling the layout away from East Baltimore to allow for the tentative SHA right-of-way with a truck circulation allowing us to get around the side-by-side and the rear, McDonald's felt that that was a better operational setup, and we threw a better circulation setup based on this configuration.
Okay, and also, I'm assuming a photometric plan will be submitted with the site plan to check lighting levels affecting other properties next door?
Yep.
Okay, and then my only other comment, and as Jim, you and I mentioned with architecture, just talking about that later, moving forward, because there's no, there were no elevations submitted with the proposal.
Absolutely, yeah. McDonald's is developing this for the property.
Thank you.
At this time, I will open up any comments from the floor. If you have any comments or like to make, if I ask a question, please come to the podium, state your name.
Good evening, Chris Tillman, private citizen residing at Ten York Street. Do have a question regarding the traffic survey and the parking counts. I believe you said that there were 15, that the peak was 15 vehicles parked. Now, did that include the cars parking, you know, in the drive-through holds or the mobile holds?
It included the holds in the parking space, not in the drive-through queuing.
No, I didn't mean, yeah, I didn't mean the drive-through queuing, but the drive-through hold space, you know, where you, you know. So, you know, as the commissioner said, you're down to nine spaces in the lot, the way that it seems to be set up now, with everything on the left-hand side is for, you know, the DoorDash and the, you know, which certainly makes sense due to the fact that there's no door on that side, but it does kind of raise the issue for whether there's sufficient number of parking spaces. And if you are considering parking across the way in the shopping center lot, you know, have you discussed that with Conawago? And are there any provisions to include a crosswalk over to that lot? And in the lighting study, should that lighting study not also include proper lighting to make sure that the, whatever area would be used for parking for McDonald's is also appropriately lit? And I will make one other note about the, about the shopping center, you know, although certainly not a lot of the spaces have been, were being used. Right now, the shopping center obviously is not at capacity by any means, and, you know, if you're reducing their capacity, that affect the potential future uses of the rest of the building. Just some questions to ask.
Good thoughts, thank you.
Anyone else on the floor?
What was the answer to that? Do you have written permission to use the shopping center or not?
I'd have to talk to McDonald's, their legal counsel handles those agreements, so I don't have an answer for you right now.
Jim, we're thinking about variance for parking?
That's in there.
Right, so the second portion of the agenda item is to give you the opportunity to provide comment for the Board of Appeals at that upcoming October hearing that's scheduled. So this is our opportunity to share any concerns or make any recommendations for the Board of Appeals.
Variance, what they were asking for all had to do with the signs, or did I miss about the parking?
You missed it, number five.
Number five?
Check.
Over, thank you. Again, any comments?
I'm really concerned about the employees, because obviously they're going to be on the shopping center. Those nine are going to be for the customers, not the workers.
I would assume they park there now.
Right, that doesn't mean it's right, yeah.
Other questions, concerns? Not, let's address the other part of the presentation about the Board of Appeals issues. It's a date, October the 22nd.
I hear, if we're going to make a recommendation, it should be as written, I think, as it's written, so it would be all of them at one time, because you can't recommend, do three of them, not the other ones.
Okay.
I think we need some, answer some of the questions about the shopping center you, or you can really answer. They need permission from the shopping center, I would think.
Yes, they got time to do that.
Yeah.
Anything to do, really, too much of this.
So you're talking specifically at item number five?
Five.
Yeah.
Something you need to present to the Board of Appeals.
Sure, absolutely.
So it's our job here is just to make a recommendation?
Recommendation to the Board of Appeals, either favorable or not favorable on the variances or? Basically, variances for the signs. What's your opinions, comments, one way or the other?
I'd say the sign variances, I'm not as worried about. It's the, it's the parking to make sure that there's actual permission to use that lot and?
We can put that in a recommendation to the Board of Appeals, that they present something for Conawago.
And the sufficient improvements to?
We all agree on that one.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we're all kind of on that page at the moment.
Want to do that.
So you don't have to actually make a recommendation one way or the other, but you can also just provide comments that you want to make sure the Board of Appeals considers at the hearing.
I'm good at providing comments.
So we will pass on, just to make sure that we're following through correctly, we will pass on to the Board of Appeals that the planning commission expressed concerns regarding the number of parking spaces and the variance to reduce them as requested, and that the suggestion was made to coordinate with Conawago or investigate if there may already be a cross-easement regarding use of the shopping center parking lot for McDonald's parking.
I'd also like to include Chris's comments with the walkway. If we're indeed going to use that parking lot over there, the walkway and proper lighting in the evening would be nice.
Good thing we record these.
That's a crosswalk comment?
Yes, that's right.
Yes. Clear on that?
Yes, I'm good, yes.
I'm good.
Jim, you got what you need? Yes, call for any comments from the floor? All right, we thank you folks very much.
Thank you all, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yes, they did, yeah.
All right, we good? Next item on the agenda, 529 East Ballmer Street Taco Bill Concept Site Plan Presentation. Representative? While you're setting? While you're setting up, Jim or Andrew, you want to lead us off on, on this?
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
Mr. Chair, if we may, just to wait for the city administrator to get back. Thank you.
I got it.
Sure. Much as was the case with, with McDonald's, we've been having conversations with the folks from Taco Bell for the last couple of months. So this evening, we finally have the concept plan for you. This is on the site that, well, we know it as the Tevis site, formerly Rob's Tower Motors, close to the Roundabout, basically across the street from McDonald's. And we're ready to go here with the images, so, and, so I will, will turn things over for the developer's engineer to share the concept with you, so.
Jim, is this taken, is this a subdivision of that lot or is it going to be two separate buildings on two, one lot?
So the, the property consists of two lots that are currently oriented, one along Baltimore Street and one to the rear. The proposal is to reorient those lots so that they are side-by-side, so each lot will have frontage on East Baltimore Street. We have done something similar to this where we've had site plans that have had lot consolidations and things like that, and we just need to ensure that timing-wise, the plat to reconfigure the lots gets recorded immediately before the site plan does. So timing is going to be important on this one, but it's not creating any additional lots. It's basically reconfiguring the two existing lots. And the Taco Bell is proposed for one of those two lots. There is a shared stormwater management concept that will address stormwater for both lots, but the first phase is just the Taco Bell restaurant. The second lot will be developed at a later point.
Lot still remain as one owner?
Correct.
Has there been anybody talking about the second lot at this point?
The, the design is for another drive-through type restaurant, but we don't have any indication of who that might be at this point, but it's expected to be a similar food service type use.
Can you guys hear me? Okay, cool. Thank you. So my name is Lauren Smaz. I am here on behalf of Dynamic Engineering as well as our developer, which is Taco Bell Corporate. I have shown the existing conditions plan on the screen at the moment, and as Jim previously mentioned, there is an existing split between the two parcels. So there, it's oriented with one existing parcel sort of at the, at the north, and then the second larger being along East Baltimore Street. So as the proposed lot consolidation, reconfiguring, we'll just be taking the horizontal property line that splits the two parcels and reorienting that to be more north to south to split it separately in that manner. So the existing parcel is, oh, because there's the two. So the, the total existing property is 2.23 acres, so it'll be split in lot one being where the Taco Bell will be developed, would be one, approximately 1.14 acres, and then where the future QSR, Quick Service Restaurant with a drive-through, will also, will be on lot two, which is approximately around 1.09 acres. So right now, we have shown the proposed development for two in this concept phase, in, in this concept submission. But as Jim previously mentioned, this project will be phased, so we will have Taco Bell being the Phase One on Lot One. That'll be constructed, and then at a later time, and we show a conceptual layout and stormwater management for Lot Two. And then at a later time, Lot Two will, the site plan will be amended to finalize the design, which will be developed by the landlord. So one owner for the, both lots, and then there will be a lease for Lot, Lot One for the Taco Bell. So as previously mentioned, it'll, will be, it's a proposed Taco Bell on Lot One with the associated single lane drive-through. There's proposed parking, pedestrian connections, and as part of Phase One of the development, the shared access point off of East Baltimore Street will additionally be constructed to demonstrate, for lot access to both lots. And as part of Phase One, there will also be a proposed sidewalk along East Baltimore Street, which has been coordinated at our pre-application meetings with SHA, the city, as well as Carroll County. The existing, both of the existing parcels, as well as the adjacent parcels to the east and west of the site are general business, and then the site to the north is a residential property. So the proposed Taco Bell will be roughly 2,118 square feet in size, and it'll provide 28 patron seedings interior to the building. So the, per the, the city code, the required quantity is one space for every three seats or one space for every 100 square feet of floor, floor area, whichever is greater. 22 spaces are required for the 28 proposed seating, as well as for the 2,118 square feet. So that's 22 required, provided quantity is 24 spaces, which is inclusive of two handicap spaces. The standard for less than 25 for eight, for handicap is only one, but we're able, with the excess parking, we're able to accommodate two handicap spaces. The provided size are nine by 18 parking spaces, with the handicap being eight by 18, and then 11 by 18 for the van accessible with the five-foot wide aisle in between. There is a proposed two-way drive aisle width of 24 feet provided throughout the site. There's not a dedicated loading space for, for the development, as the loading will be anticipated to be provided during off-peak hours and will not impact the, the, or I shouldn't say, not off-peak hours, but the wind that's not open to the public. Pedestrian amenities, as I previously mentioned, the sidewalk is being proposed along East Baltimore Street, and as it's shown right now along Lots One and Lot Two, it'll be constructed across both lots during that Phase One of the development. And there's no existing sidewalk at the, at this moment. The existing site is, it's an open section, so there's no curb that exists today. We'll be closing that section, providing curb, so the only really opening to the site will be the proposed dual-drive entrance. And then for both of the lots, pedestrian accessibility will be provided from onsite to that right-of-way sidewalk. For fire department, the minimum width is typically 20 feet. As I previously mentioned, we're providing the 24-foot aisle or driveway, and then, and we have done truck circulation so that there is fire accessibility, as well as delivery trucks can accommodate maneuverability throughout the site. We do have a proposed trash enclosure. It's located towards the north side of the site, close to the shared, the lot divide between the two proposed lots. Typically, we try to tuck it away from, and not have it right off of the front of the, of East Baltimore. WB50 truck is utilized, will be utilized for the Taco Bell deliveries, which I previously mentioned is, will be feasible for the site. For the drive-through stacking, the, the city code says, states that drive-through restaurants shall provide adequate stacking capacity. That does not impede vehicle circulation through the site or result in vehicle stacking onto the road. Based off of the, the proposed layout, it can support stacking of 10 cars without impacts to the adjacent parking. And the menu board is placed kind of smack dab in the middle of that, based off of, Taco Bell typically likes five queuing between ordering and the pickup window, so that they can accommodate, they, they have enough time to, from ordering to providing the meal. So that's pretty standard there. We have had preliminary discussions with SHA to get their initial input for East Baltimore Street and a traffic impact study. The scope was confirmed with the city of Tonny Town. Dynamic traffic is contracted through the city of Tonny Town. I know Jim has had some conversations with our traffic engineer, so, but that is, that has been, a draft copy of that has been submitted to the city. For landscaping buffers, the, the city of Tonny Town refer, refers to the county for landscape standards, so the Carroll County Landscape Manual was reviewed as part of this lot layout. And so it will, as currently shown, it will, we are providing the necessary buffers. It's six-foot adjacent to non-residential uses. There is no standard for the front yard per the county landscape manual, and then the rear yard, there is a 20-foot landscape buffer provided where adjacent to residential properties. And I think as currently shown, we're exceeding that 20 feet for the proposed drive aisle by a little bit. There, as shown on the plan, there is a, a proposed driveway connection also off of Amicus Street, and that will be as well to, that will additionally serve both lots in the ultimate For interior landscaping, a many, minimum of 10% of the parking lot area is to be reserved for interior landscaping, which can be accommodated, and landscape island shall be provided every 12 parking spaces. And while Lot Two is a, as a, is a conceptual layout at this point, it's subject to change with the future amendment of the final site plan. The layout shown right now also provides sufficient stacking for the drive-through and the, it, we have a roughly 2,500-square-foot quick-service restaurant, which would require 25 parking spaces, which is, 25 parking spaces is shown for Lot Two. There's also a conceptual location for the dumpster enclosure for Lot Two, which is tucked sort of similarly at the rear of the site. And then a six-foot landscape space between paved surfaces for drive-through service lanes is provided between the paved surface and the lot line at a minimum. As shown, the, both lots accommodate the building height maximum, which is 35 feet. Proposed is around 23 and a half feet for the Taco Bell. There's a 40-yard front, front yard, 40-foot front yard setback, excuse me. No standards for side yards, and then 50 feet from residential zones, which both Lot One and Lot Two layouts can accommodate, as shown. In existing conditions, the total for the two parcels combined, and this is something we've, we've had a few calls with, with Carroll County now, is the city's transitioning into Carroll County's review of the stormwater management design. For the stormwater management, it's a total, we're combining them to treat the site holistically with shared stormwater management facilities. So the existing site with the two parcels is currently 60, roughly 61.5% impervious today, which exceeds the 40% minimum for redevelopment criteria per Maryland Department of Environment Standards. The proposed conditions, the site will be roughly reduced to 50.7%, 50.7% impervious. As shown on the plan right now, there is a submerged gravel wetland proposed in the middle of the site to treat the Taco Bell and the parking lot. And then there will be two, two submerged gravel wetlands proposed on Lot Two to treat both the restaurant, as well as the drive aisles and parking lot for that lot, which will be able to provide environmental set, design to the site to the maximum extent practicable to bring back the site to a woods-in-good condition. For environmental, we did have a cursory site investigation with an environmental consultant out on site, where there were no indication of wetlands, specimen trees, forest, or other other, or other, any other environmental features on site. There are some hatched areas for some steep slopes, but they're minimal, and the large portion of steep slopes in the middle is primarily around the stockpile that exists today from the demolition of the existing building that once stood on the, the parcel. The site is not located within a flood zone. It's, per FEMA mapping, it's outside of the 2%, 0.2% annual chance flood plain. And then to kind of, and then to kind of conclude the proposed presentation, we do have, obviously, without knowing who the ultimate tenant will be for Lot Two, we don't know the proposed signage, but for, for the Lot One for the Taco Bell, we do have proposed signage. The site setbacks, heights, and such are, are able to be accommodated. However, we do have a variance application submitted for the total site signage area. Per the code, a total maximum sign area of 57 square feet for the entire Taco Bell lot is, per code, allowed because of the orientation of the building, where the, the front facade facing East Baltimore Street is only 28 and a half feet long, and it's two square foot of signage per frontage of that building. So we're proposing around 225 square feet total, and that's a combination of the menu board, the, there's a, going to be a freestanding monument sign. It will not be pylon sign, as I understand the city of Tonny Town does not like a pylon sign, so it will be a monument sign. And then the building facade signage as well, so that, that's where that total area comes from. And then, sorry, last but not least, lighting will, a photometric plan will be provided to, and illumination of the signs will be shaded and shielded from the adjacent lots, and then proposed public water and sewer will be servicing the site from, either, there's service access either from Amicus Street or East Baltimore Street. And that concludes my presentation on the proposed development.
Jim, are they going to present, Board of Appeals?
Sorry?
About the Board of Appeals for this?
Yes, so as, as was just mentioned, there, there'll be a, a signed variance request. That came in just in, just in time to get it on the table before you guys tonight, so if possible, we would like to include that with the Board of Appeals hearings that are scheduled for October 22nd. So there was a packet on your table this evening with the, the details of the, with the actual variance application. Just in summary, the, the frontage of the building is relatively small, and per, you know, our code, as was mentioned, we allow two square feet of signage for each linear foot of building frontage. So because the building is the short side facing the street, they have very modest by-right signage allocation. right signage allocation.
Question, on Lot Two, I thought you mentioned, please, full service? What's a full service?
Oh, sorry, a quick-service restaurant is sort of the...
Quick service is Taco?
Yes, so, yes, so that's like a Taco Bell, Wendy's, McDonald's, like a fast food restaurant, essentially. It's just sort of another name for fast food.
Full service is what?
Like a sit-down?
Well, I'm waiting here. Are we talking about, because that's, that's something that the city's been looking for for a long time, is a sit-down restaurant.
Right.
That what you're saying is possible for Lot Two?
It could be, that is ultimately up to the landlord, so, yeah.
I just wanted to hear you say it.
Yes. There will be 28 seats if you would like to sit down in Taco Bell.
All right, thank you. Comments?
I have several. I was wondering why you didn't take the sidewalk back to the neighborhood behind you?
What about one on the north side?
Yeah.
Amicus Street.
Yeah, so there, there, yeah, because there is a sidewalk along Amicus Street.
Yes, why, why didn't you hook into that?
There's an existing sidewalk that connects Break Iron Street to East Baltimore Street.
Yeah, there is a, it's on, kind of in this Wilson Avenue. It's labeled C O N C period walk.
So they're going to walk up East Baltimore Street and around instead of coming in the back way? Okay.
Why wouldn't we connect it?
Yeah.
And that is something we could look into. I do know it's rather steep, kind of back here, so we can, we can look into that for, for great. I'm sorry, in the proposed conditions, because, because of the, we can look at, into that.
And there, there's a sidewalk from your rear driveway that goes around to the Wilson Avenue sidewalk, right?
That exists already, I believe.
So, so the, the Wilson Avenue sidewalk is, is existing in today? So we're essentially proposing a connection from the onsite to the sidewalk that we're proposing in East Baltimore, and it all sort of connects and loops around. However, that would be a safer route as opposed to cross, we would essentially have to cross through the, to make a connection here, cross through the, the drive aisle.
It'd be better to walk in on the, on that, that access road at that point.
It has been done before, putting a crosswalk through the drive-through, but...
Not around.
I'm sorry?
Those people go up the street, not around.
Up here, then they would walk over here.
The...
Not to the building behind.
Yeah, they wouldn't be coming up that way, they'll walk straight up.
Right. Why go down by CVS?
Right.
People takes the mean of least resistance.
Yeah.
And my other concern is, are you shortening up your parking spaces?
Yes.
I'm concerned the front end of the car is going to be out into the sidewalk. An ADA says you can't block a sidewalk. Especially when you get up close to your doors, you're not going to have any room at all.
So as, as shown, we have a, I believe a seven-foot wide sidewalk from, along the front of the building, and then it's 18 feet wide, 18 feet long.
I don't care how wide it is, you cannot block, block any part of your sidewalk under ADA. So your car cannot hang over the sidewalk.
Correct, yeah, and 18-foot long is, is, is 18-foot in length for the parking spaces is pretty standard throughout the state of Maryland.
You're going to have a bumper block there to keep the car from going over the sidewalk?
Got to be.
You should.
Okay.
You're violating ADA.
We, yes, we can look into that.
The answer is yes, okay, thank you.
I have, I have a question.
Phil.
On the traffic, traffic flow, coming in on the full access driveway in the back. Jim?
In the back?
In the back. With the flow of traffic coming off of East Baltimore Street, and we know how that can be, can be very challenging. What's going to happen? Is that Amicus Street and Break Iron, is that going to be able, able to support that?
People cutting through there.
That traffic. So my concern down there is coming out from Break Iron, where you come out of CVS, you come out of Food Line, and there's a stop sign there, and it's a mess now.
That's the reason I'm bringing it up, you know, because...
You can't go across, I don't believe. You can't go from Break Iron over, right?
That would be through the drive-through.
Yeah.
It's going to be dumping out on Amicus.
Yeah, you're going to come out on Amicus.
You're going to hang a right or a left and go down, and Break Iron is in behind, yes. So is that all going to support? Are we looking at that?
Well, yeah, so they could go out the front, right? But...
Well, that was my other question.
Yeah.
I mean, so we do have a traffic study showing that analyzed, because we know how that area up there is so condensed, you know? We're going to put two more buildings up there. Are we going to make sure we have it? Are we going to have a right turn only in? You know, it looks like we're going to be able to come back out. Are they going to be going left turn? No, that's going to be a...
That'd be a mess.
It's going to be a mess.
That'd be a right turn only.
Well, that's, that's the reason I'm bringing it up. We've seen it. We live here. We just got to make sure the backup that we already have going back through the circle, is that going to make any more issues? So the traffic flow coming in off of East Baltimore Street, going up and parking, once they get their food and come back, are they going to go back and hit Amicus Street and Break Iron? Is that all going to be able to support that?
The traffic study is going to, the traffic study, and there is one that, a draft is ready, but the report hasn't been finalized yet. And the, traffic studies generally are going to study intersection capacity and not the streets themselves. So at Chevron Drive and East Baltimore Street, that, that, that intersection was included in the study. I don't have the final report yet on it, but that, I believe, was, was functioning well within capacity or within tolerances with the proposed new development.
Both properties, or just Taco Bell?
Both of them are analyzed in there, yeah.
Just asking.
I believe they are, so, and, and again, we're, we're only at concept stage right now.
I understand.
So, you know, things could change, but I would, I would anticipate that during higher traffic periods, during peak hours for traffic, that a lot of folks are going to utilize Amicus Street and Break Iron to exit at the signalized intersection, just to be able to pull out at, at a traffic signal rather than try to wait for a break in, you know, especially for a left turn movement. That, that would be my expectation. Now, you know, the traffic engineers, of course, are going to, you know, have their projections based on their expertise, which is certainly, I'm not a traffic expert.
Yeah, I'm just...
But that's, that is all part of the study.
And, and so to answer your one question, as, I, I do know both lots were going to be analyzed as part of the traffic impact study. So as we showed, a 2,500 square foot restaurant on Lot Two, that is the same square footage restaurant that was to be analyzed as part of the impact study.
Yeah, yeah, I just, there's more, but, okay, all right.
I have two quick. First, does the sidewalk connect to the existing sidewalk in front of CVS? Or are we going to have sidewalk to nowhere?
The, that's, the CVS is down Break Iron, I believe, or...
The, this, basically the frontage on, on East Baltimore there has, has sidewalk.
Right. We haven't, we, typically in, in development, we just, we propose the sidewalk along the frontage of the, of the, of the project parcel.
Just know that may be coming.
Okay.
So they would, you're asking them to put a sidewalk in front of the neighbor's property?
No, to, 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 to connect to whatever is there already.
Says she was going to check that.
Yes, the, I guess, how, how far down the road is the CVS, would I ask?
I believe it goes, it goes, oh, there is that house in between, so... Basically up to the, the old Wilson Avenue. Okay. When, when Creekside was built, they were required to put this sidewalk in that, that goes from Amicus Street to Baltimore Street and to make that connection down to CVS. So the existing sidewalk terminates basically within, if it's not at the property line, it's within a couple of feet of the property line there. Okay, I thought that sidewalk went that way.
I think, I was going to say, I believe we are...
And, yeah.
Yes, so we're connecting in...
Okay, cool.
Right there to the existing.
Okay, cool, we're good.
Sorry, I just wasn't sure if it, if there were any gaps in between there.
And, and I have to ask...
Yeah, of course.
We have a Taco Bell locally that's notorious for its drive-through exit and its treacherousness. Are there any drop-offs near the exit of the drive-through to Taco Bell so that cars could possibly turn off and end up...
Like a bailout, essentially?
No, no, like end up half in a ditch on top of a curb?
Oh, oh, no, there are no ditches right there.
Okay. The, the other Taco Bell has an elevated drive-through exit, and the drive-through exit has its own Facebook page. It's notorious for having cars sitting on top of the curb.
My goal will be not to have its own Facebook page for that.
That's it, I'm good.
Comments from the floor? I'll jump in.
I believe our director as well has a...
A couple.
Come forward. Please state your name.
Steve Sholkoff. I'm a resident of Amicus Street, been there 10 years on Creekside. And I like Taco, Taco Bell, and I like different restaurants, but this is going to create a traffic nightmare in our area, and I'll tell you why. Break Iron goes by the water tower, and a lot of times when you're going up Break Iron or even coming down the other way from Ice Street there, Amicus, you have a blind area right there. You can't even see the cars coming around the turn, and it's, it's, traffic, I think it's going to be a lot of traffic crashes there, if there's not a lot of them already or close to it, because a lot of cars speed right around those turns there. They go way too fast. When Cannon was opened up to Meade, from Meade Development, straight through to 194, that opened more traffic to us on Amicus. The cars coming now from Stumptown down Amicus, when they turn into Amicus, they come one stop sign there, 100 feet in. From that stop sign all the way down to Food Line around the bend, we don't have any stop signs. It's like the Indianapolis 500 half the time. We have a 20 mile an hour speed limit. If I sit on my porch in my driveway right there where I live, I see probably more than half the cars going 30, 40, 50, I've seen 50 mile an hours going across that road. We have a wide street there, and it entices people, a lot of young ones, to think they're on a highway. I mean, it's not even close to 20 miles an hour speed limit. Now, if you're going to put in a parking space around that bend there to get into Taco Bell, I don't know how you're going to come in and out of that place. You got a sharp turn there by the water tower. CVS is a rough place to come in and out of as it is right now, it's terrible. When you pull out of that little parking area at CVS and you want to go left, back to Baltimore Street, or right back into Amicus, you got to watch yourself because people coming from one way and the other, and I'll tell you something, that is a tricky little area right there. And like I say, that blind area by the water tower, you can't even see when you're coming one way and you got cars coming the other way. You better be to the right because they're coming around those bends, boy, I tell you. I think it's very dangerous. And now you're going to put up by, well, one of my neighbors has the Brick Ranch right there, and you're going to put a driveway to get into Taco Bell right in front of her home there. I don't know how you're going to make left and rights without bottling up that whole area there. And more traffic coming down Amicus where we already have too much traffic. Just a few months ago, they put in Tonny Town here a temporary speed bump for us. It's about this high. More than half the people, I guarantee you, don't even slow up for that thing, says speed bump. Nobody stops, there's no incentive to stop when it's this high. They put a nice big one on Stumptown. We could use two of them, which I said, the worker told me they were going to put two nice speed bumps on Amicus to slow people down. I haven't seen a hair of anything yet. I don't know if it's going to happen, I hope it does, because we need it on, on Amicus. There is nothing to stop these people from shooting down from Stumptown all the way to Food Line, nothing. They come shooting down there. I don't see police hardly ever, you know, doing radar or anything. I don't know what the reason is for that, but it's a speed wave down Amicus right now, and I, I don't know what's going to happen when you get more traffic in from these restaurants here, especially around CVS, you know, Food Line bottling up the light from Juan Chevrolet and all that. I don't know what's going to happen here.
Dan?
And now, Tonny Town, you know, over the years, Tonny Town's getting more crowded. When you come from, and I used to come home from work and go past the circle, and now you're coming down Main Street to the first light by Juan Chevrolet, you're backed up, way back. Now people are going to come into the restaurants right there off the main drag. Yeah, they'll come in there, and if they don't come in, then they got to go all the way around to get to the Amicus where I live up there. That, and then I don't know how they're going to get out of there either, because when it's bumper to bumper between four and six o'clock or so, what's happening now, Tonny Town's getting more crowded, you know? And that Main, Main Street there, East Baltimore is getting crowded.
It's about 3:30.
Yeah, it does. And the lights you got up there, 194 and Main Street, there's no green arrows up there, so everything bottles up, up there, because now people looking to turn, they turn, they can't turn because you got no arrows, you got, going both ways. I don't know why arrows weren't set up at that light a long time ago, it should be. Nothing's there. You could be waiting there, God knows how long, to make a turn on that traffic light up there. So this is just going to be, like I said, I have nothing against restaurants, but it's a bad location. We don't want more traffic coming on Amicus. We got enough problems right now with Amicus Street. That's all I have to say about that.
Thank you, make note of that. Thank you.
It got worse when they put the 20 mile an hour speed sign on Tavannan Road. I know that.
Ma'am?
Good evening, and thank you very much for the opportunity to speak before you about the site plan for Taco Bell. My name is Cassie Lewis, and I live in Creekside. And I want to just give you a brief background for myself to put my remarks in some, in a context. I am a retired certified economic developer. I've been at the state level attracting new business, and in the 1980s, I was the Director of Business Economic Development here in Carroll County. That said, I'm not here to oppose the plan, but I am here to stress the need for the Taco Bell Corporation to sit down with Creekside and seriously talk about the impact that that intersection, that full access intersection coming from Taco Bell onto Amicus. It is a major issue for us, not to mention us, but we also have the Amish community who lives, many of them live behind us, and they use Amicus, they're horse and buggies. I cannot imagine what the traffic congestion would be if you, if you include them. I'm, I'm actually kind of surprised that you don't have the traffic study, because that is the number one issue, I believe, for Taco Bell. The other, the other comments I had, be interested in knowing the hours of operation for Taco Bell.
I do not know at this time, but I will get that answer for you.
Okay. How about the angle of the lights? Would they be shining into the residences?
No, per, per city code, we're, we're required to angle them down and shield the illumination from adjacent sites.
Okay. The dumpster, the trash pickup, anybody who's lived near a large business with a lot of food waste, the trucks come in, they bang on, they bang that dumpster to empty it. How will Taco Bell dispose of their garbage?
I, I assume it would just be regular city pickup, trash pickup.
It's very, very close to our residential community, and I think banging, a dumpster being banged against the receptacle would be a problem, particularly at nighttime. And if they're doing that when, during their off-hours, for a lot of people in the community, that's their sleeping hours. that's their sleeping hours.
The, um, I, I don't believe the, the deliveries will be during off-hours, uh, however, I believe the trash will be during normal trash business hours.
Okay. Uh, what type of screening is planned to separate Taco Bell from, uh, the residential house, the brick house right there?
So, um, as noted, there, there's a enhanced 20-foot buffer aga- adjacent to residential properties, however, it's only a 6-foot landscape buffer between commercial, um, so, uh, slightly greater than, somewhere in the 20 to 25-foot range is a landscape buffer being provided. I believe, um, evergreen trees are, are required because they're, they're a good, good buffer, it's a thicker tree, um, to provide both, um, visual screening as a, and, as well as noise. It's a noise buffer as well.
Are there any variances being requested for this plan?
Only the total signage, um, area, but that is it.
Okay. The, um, again, I'd like to just emphasize, um, you know, the development on these lots is a priority funding area. It's been, um, in bad shape and an eyesore as people enter our town. So the development is a good idea. But it's also a good idea to keep the quality of Creekside in mind. Uh, there are people there who have probably made one of the biggest investments in their life and the quality of life there is very important. So, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Daniel Shames. Uh, I used to live in Creekside. I currently live in Carroll Vista, the over 55 community, but, uh, I used to live in Creekside. I absolutely concur with what the gentleman said. The traffic on, uh, on Amicus, because it's a connector from Stumptown Road, uh, out to, uh, by the, uh, Food Lion, there are cars that are speeding, there's just no doubt about it. And the, as he pointed out, the temporary speed bump is really not a deterrent. And I fear that the traffic ingress and egress from the Taco Bell will greatly complicate the traffic flow, as bad as it is now. Now, I wanna change gears, I have some questions for you. What, I'd like some more clarity on the plan for Lot 2.
So at this time, it is anticipated to be a similar use, um, a quick service restaurant or a fast food?
When you say quick service, so QSR.
Yes.
Is the stock symbol for Restaurant Brands Incorporated, which is one of the competitors of Yum! Brands, the owner of Taco Bell. So are you saying that Lot 2?
The competitor will be going in, likely. Two different developers.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Is Tonny Town aware that this is a tripling of fast food restaurants in such a concentrated
Aware, and that's my original question about service.
The, the full service versus quick service.
Compared to the.
I, the, it is ultimately up to the landlord, um, who will be developing Lot 2. So we are looking to get Lot 1 and Lot 2 developments approved at concept level and then Phase 1, which is the Taco Bell, will proceed on to Final for approval and then development, and at a later time, the landlord will amend the site plan to finalize the development for Lot 2. So at this time, there's no concrete end user, um, this is just what's anticipated at this time, but it's subject to change.
I might have misheard when, in your presentation, that Lot 2 might, uh, be developed for a sit-down restaurant.
Uh, it, it was a, it was a question of, of, uh, is there a possibility that a sit-down restaurant could be proposed as Lot 2? There's always a possibility.
Did your, did your traffic study, I'm, I, I believe that a quick service restaurant would have a different traffic pattern compared to a sit-down restaurant? Did your traffic study take that into account?
Uh, not at this time. I don't, I don't believe, I, I'm not the traffic engineer though, so I, I can look into that for you, but I believe at this time, those just analyzed as a quick service restaurant.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
I don't believe there's enough parking to have a regular sit-down restaurant. Yeah.
Hey, everybody, Wilson Bounce, and the property next door there at Wilson Avenue, pure coincidence. The sidewalk that's on Wilson Avenue, in my opinion, was put in the wrong spot. Um, that was originally a 30-foot right-of-way for the property, and then for some reason it was put on the left-hand side of the property instead of the right-hand side of that parcel. And so I'd strongly ask you to not put the side, to, you know, use this as a way to not have the sidewalk in the middle of, of a 30-foot stretch and, and be one of the few sidewalks in town that are not on the edge of the property. I don't know if you see or know what I'm saying there?
Think so, yes, yes.
Okay. Um, I don't know why it was done that way, the Creekside developers were forced to put it there, it made zero sense. Uh, it was done slightly while I owned the property, but it was already in force and I couldn't do anything when I bought the property, it was already, had already been approved to put it in the wrong spot. Um, so I would ask that it be moved to the right or somehow done in there. It's not even in the center, it's on the left-hand side of it. It is on the left-hand side of a 30-foot right-of-way. The right-of-way was, after that was done, was then granted to me, so it wasn't even when it was put in there. I had a right-of-way to drive on it, I was the only one that would need to drive on it.
Driving car right up the sidewalk.
Um, but I, yeah, I drove, yes, I had, would have one tire on the sidewalk while driving up the driveway. Still do today in certain instances. The other thing that I guess I would just ask is, are you all required to change the lot lines? Or is that taking your all's approval? And if so, I'm assuming you've recognized that you have the ability to stop two fast food places and only allow one, and I don't know what the legal rights are or aren't. Um, I've obviously caught her attention.
Caught my attention the whole time, sir.
So I don't know what your, whether you are required?
Jim, can you jump in here? I certainly would like to ask Jay to jump in.
The city code is silent on lot consolidations and reconfigurations. So you have approval authority on subdivisions, um, and of course, site plans as well. So this reconfiguration of the lots is not a subdivision, there are two existing lots of record there. So, a- as I said, our code is silent on it. It will come before you as part of this process, and if the lots were created by a plat, which I believe they were, they need to be modified by a plat. So in Tonny Town, the Planning Commission Chairperson has to sign plats that get recorded. So I suppose if it came down to it, could you withhold your signature? Probably. Could the city be sued for it? Probably. So, again, I would, and without there being a, a city attorney actively participating in our planning commission meetings at this point, I would defer for some legal guidance on that as to whether you, you know, whether the city could really, um, flex any muscle there.
Sheriff, look into that and give us feedback.
Sure.
This is where we hope for our bypass.
I mean, it's from a developer standpoint, I appreciate trying to squeeze it in, right? But squeezing it in creates congestion. I don't know where you, I don't know where you go. Thank you.
I guess the, uh, population of around 8,000 can support, uh, three fast foods? I don't know. Somebody must have already had the study.
Yeah.
My name is Becky Mendenhall, I live on Amicus Street. My family and I moved here about eight years ago, we lived in Laurel, Maryland, between DC and Baltimore. We were looking to move outside of the Beltway to quieter pace, we found our way to Tonny Town. Um, the Creekside development seemed like a great place for our family, I have two boys. My older son was able to walk safely to and from the bus stop, um, to go to school, we had no worries about it. It's a lovely neighborhood, families take walks in the evening up and down the sidewalk, um, you see people walking with their kids, mothers with their, pushing the babies in their strollers, going to and from the library, uh, people walking their dogs, kids riding their bikes. There has been a significant increase in traffic since the, um, Meade's Crossing development was built, there are more people that are cutting through our neighborhood from Stumptown and forward. Obviously, that's not desirable, but it is what it is at this point for that. Um, the traffic at the Circle has definitely increased significantly since we moved here. And I, just the other day, I work in Westminster, was coming home at about 4:00 in the afternoon and was almost up to the Circle, waiting at the light in order to get up to our street to turn. Sorry, I have a few notes here. I believe that if this development moves forward, people will not only access that parking lot for the business, they will also cut through in order to avoid sitting in traffic, which will dump directly out into our neighborhood, which is ill-equipped to handle it. In addition to the fact, my neighbor mentioned the curve in the road, it is a blind curve, um, you cannot see if you're going down, if there's someone coming up and around, and that's with current traffic conditions, without adding anything else, where people are gonna be coming in and out for various reasons. I'll tell you, multiple times a week, I see from my window, the Amish buggies that are coming to and from Food Lion and the horses there, um, as well. I think there is a good reason that those lots are as they are right now. We had a business fronting, uh, East Baltimore Street, which had an appropriate amount of traffic for a business that would be in that location, right near the traffic circle, and the lot in between served as a buffer for our community. Um, if this moves forward, my biggest concern is that access road coming onto Amicus Street. If development, obviously it's commercially zoned, um, area, if that type of development must happen, I would prefer that it be something other than another fast food restaurant, uh, but if it must, I believe that it must be founded on being able to handle the traffic to and from East Baltimore Street, not coming on Amicus Street into our neighborhood. If the business is not suitable based on that, then I think it's not suitable for that place in the community and perhaps needs another location. I'm concerned about the light, the noise, the traffic, the safety, that is the biggest issue, I, my biggest issue, I can tell you as a mother. And just considering what the, the changes, none of which I can imagine would be positive on our community, should this move forward. I thank you for hearing my comments, I thank you for considering, um, the safety and needs and benefit of the families that have chosen to live in this community, particularly in Creekside this evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Much for your input.
Chris Tillman, uh, Ten York Street. Um, I have a couple of, of questions regarding tractor-trailer access for delivery purposes. I assume that they'll come in off of Baltimore Street and then circle around, go out the back entrance?
Presently, the intent would be for it to use both lots to circle around and it would just be East Baltimore.
How would they do that before development of the second lot?
Um, so the, the development is, um, for the Amicus Drive would be, it sort of looks like a T, um, and it'll stop at the proposed lot line, um, so it'd be sufficient space for it, a turnaround.
So you're expecting tractor-trailers to pull, to pull up next to the restaurant to unload, pull up to the driveway, turn back up and then turn and come out?
Um, that, that is, it, for every delivery, there, there are, um, delivery routes that the drivers are, are instructed to make, so, um, if Amicus Street is a concern, then the deliveries could be solely off of East Baltimore.
I believe that there is a concern about Break Iron, if I'm not mistaken, I believe at one time, there was a question about whether, when it was built, whether it was built to city standards or not, because it wasn't originally intended to be a public street. If I recall that, uh, conversation in that regard. So that, uh, now, you know, I, I, no matter what you tell a truck driver, um, he's gonna do what he's gonna do, or she. And I think you're gonna end up with a lot of heavy truck traffic on Amicus and Break Iron. The other real issue is that it won't take very long for people to realize, uh, that now, since they have to come down Amicus to Break Iron and out to the stop sign and then turn left to go down to the traffic signal, that now they can just simply zip into the Taco Bell lot and go out the entrance and shortcut all of that. Um, and I think you're gonna find that, uh, that's going to be a real issue. Um, I also wanna bring up the issue, I, I know it was kind of mentioned, but wasn't really, uh, clearly, uh, say to what the issue is, but at the stop sign at Chevron Drive and Break Iron, uh, the issue is not the intersection at Chevron and Baltimore Street, the issue is the entrance, uh, to the CVS right next to that stop sign. I personally have nearly had accidents, um, coming out of the, turning left from that stop sign and people pulling out of the CVS parking lot, and I've seen it happen time and again. Uh, so that, that's a, a real issue and, um, I think if you're gonna be adding to that traffic flow, you're gonna be adding to that issue. The other question I have, and this is kind of a, a question up in the air, um, and it may pertain to, uh, what you've, what, what the commission does later on, but I would think that in order to, um, create the new lots in the configuration that they're showing, I think that those lots have to be consolidated first and then resubdivided. I'm not sure that that's what would be considered a lot-line adjustment, but that would be for the attorney to figure out. Thank you.
Taco Bell property at the back end.
I, I, I do know there was, um, concern about stop signs, I guess, along that road and we do have stop sign proposed, but we, we can look into speed bump as well.
Just a thought, so, anyone else?
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you. Uh, just real quick, um, looking at the architecture and looking through several other prototype stores throughout the region, I would just like to have a conversation about the arc, the proposed architecture of the building and also about this, there's, I wanna be clear, sorry, um, just wanna be clear about the signage that is included. There's signage in here, like for instance, the Live Moss sign and the signage with a lot of, um, of the bells on it. Would these also, were these included in the tabulation for the signage?
Um, sorry, one moment, um.
Page A, A4.1.
Um, so, oops, sorry. The, um, the bell and the, um, the channel letters showing.
Okay. And this one was not?
No, that's intended to be more of like a mural as opposed to a sign. But if the city determines that as a sign, then it would be, it would need to be included.
Okay. And that's something we can, we can definitely talk about.
Okay. Yes. Yeah, on page, I believe this is, there is a signage table, kind of at the bottom right-hand corner. So that kind of shows all of the signs that are, sorry. That table shows all of the signs that are included in that tabulation.
Okay. Thank you. Because that, that large mural that you're mentioning, it has a lot of Taco Bell logos in it. So it looks like a sign advertising for Taco Bell.
Right. Understood. And as part of the concept plan site, the concept plan review, we can always adjust that table as needed.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, of course.
My name is Jen Wood. I am also a Creekside resident. My family and I were actually the second house built, and so we've been there for well over 12 years now. And I will be very brief, because my neighbors have wonderfully expressed, I think, what many of us are concerned about. But I, I just, I thought there might be value in adding my voice as yet another concerned family and not just the three or four that were able to come up already. And I don't think it's possible to overstate the concerns about traffic and safety and especially speed. We have, we tried actually since almost day one to get help with the speeding on Amicus. And it was just within the last year that we got those very tiny speed bumps. And so we were grateful, but they are really not effective. And so I have incredible concern about what even more traffic will bring to that. And so I just wanted to add my voice to that. And the other thing that I don't know if there can be any clarity offered on, when it comes to the traffic reports, it was my understanding that those are, that just intersections are considered, correct?
Correct.
So if, if another intersection is not created, like further down East Baltimore between the traffics or whatever, like we know where that, the light is at the CVS. I don't understand then how that traffic will be considered in the traffic report or how the traffic through our neighborhood gets considered in a traffic report, if we're only looking, because we have one light there in our main area of consideration. So how do our concerns get included in the traffic report?
So, and Jim, you might be able to speak to it a little bit more of the, I don't know if you know in your conversations with dynamic traffic on the specific intersections that were involved, but I do know the site entrances, the site access points were studied as well as a few intersections down. So it's not just the intersection that might be right in front, but it, there are additional intersections down. So.
So the only problem with that is that it doesn't include our neighborhood. Like that includes the very entrance to our neighborhood, but it doesn't include any part of our neighborhood where the other 60-plus homes are. And it doesn't include, we have one bus stop in our neighborhood. So every child that gets on any of the buses, elementary, middle, they all get off at one spot. And it's generally a large number of children that are moving within our community at any given time. And so it doesn't sound like that can be considered either.
I guess, just because I'm, I'm not as familiar with your neighborhood, so.
Well, that's why we're here.
Right. Yes, exactly. So the, you said that there's one entrance into, essentially one entrance into your neighborhood?
No, we have one bus stop in our neighborhood. And if our neighborhood, the inner workings of our neighborhood, those 65 homes, if those aren't included in the traffic report or traffic study, then everything happening in our neighborhood is excluded from the study, including our one bus stop where all of our children are walking from.
So I, I suppose the, if your neighborhood accesses one of the studied intersections, then by default, the traffic from your neighborhood would be analyzed as, so it's essentially not, it's not just what traffic is from, is generated by this, but it's, it's taking into consideration the local traffic as a whole, and then what impact does this development have to that?
Right. I understand that, but what I'm saying is, I don't feel like we have, am I, maybe I'm not explaining myself properly. I feel like we don't have intersections that can be included, because we're just, almost a circle, essentially.
The study looked at East Baltimore and Grand Chevron, at East Baltimore in the shopping center driveway, at Tawnytown Pike and Old Tawnytown Road and Antrim Boulevard, and also East Baltimore Street at the proposed site driveway.
So nothing from Stumptown or Roberts Mill onto Amicus?
Right. So it focuses on the intersections closest to the proposed use.
Right. So the development that many people have referenced from Meads Crossing, that has increased the traffic from the back end of the neighborhood, which is not included in any of what you just listed. So I think it's fair to assume that that traffic flow will continue to increase, but it's not considerable in the study. So I'm just asking if there's a way that all of those additional things can be part of the conversation or can continue in the conversation.
Ma'am, I think it's very important if you and all your neighbors come to the meeting on October 22nd. It would really make a difference.
It would? Really, it will?
Yes, I think so.
Okay. Will it be the same time?
I believe so.
Okay.
The hearings will start at 7:30. I expect that they will be at half-hour intervals. I don't know exactly where in the list Taco Bell will be.
Where in that meeting? Sure. Okay.
But again, the variance that will be focused on, on the 22nd is about the signage.
Understood.
So that, that's, that's going to be, the Board of Appeals is considering the sign variance and not the overall site development.
Okay. Understood. All right. Thank you all very much. Appreciate it.
Anyone else?
Hi. My name's Karen Cessna, and I live in Creekside on Amicus Street. And one thing that I didn't hear mentioned at all was on Break Iron Street. If you're coming out of Amicus and you come around onto Break Iron, heading for Chevron, there's a stop sign. And the people are coming out of CVS, no stop sign. And the people counting out of Food Lion, no stop sign. And the people coming up Break Iron to go into Food Lion, they don't even bother to notice. We have a stop sign. Well, believe me, I stop and I wait. If they're turning in on Break Iron, I wait. But I think that's a very dangerous intersection right now. And if we have more traffic coming from this new access onto Amicus, that could be even much more dangerous. Plus, Amicus is a street, there's two-way traffic, there's parking, and I don't know if it's big enough for a tractor-trailer to come out from that back of Taco Bell and turn onto Amicus. I know those are big machines. And even when they're coming on 140, East Baltimore Street, turning into Chevron, they have to take a wide swing. So I'm not sure a tractor-trailer would do very well coming out of that place onto Amicus. Just a couple comments about the traffic study. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to just share a few things, since we have a bunch of residents from the Creekside community here. So the speed bumps that are in there are intended to be temporary. This fiscal year, there is a plan to build the permanent speed tables, but they won't be done until spring. So they may not be exactly like the one on Stumptown. They'll be more like the ones that are on Westview Drive, which connects Harney Road to York Street. We recently repaved and installed two speed tables on Westview. That's the spec that we plan to use in the future for, for all the speed tables. So as the Planning Commission knows, we're often faced with the dilemma of how wide streets should be. So historically, the city's built a lot of 36 and 38-foot-wide streets and expected people to drive 20 miles an hour on them. That doesn't work out real well. We've tried narrow streets with parking on one side, and then the people who can't park in front of their houses are upset. So it's a, it's a bit of a dilemma for the city to figure out what kind of street people want. People seem to want a really wide street so they can park on either side, but they want people to drive slow. And wide streets and fresh pavement and slow traffic really don't usually all happen at the same time. So we're faced now with going back and retrofitting speed tables on these wide streets. So it's going to take time, but the current administration is focused on trying to make a difference there. So I'll ask that you be patient. The speed tables are coming. It should be in this fiscal year or so before June, but it'll be part of our, our traffic paving program in the spring. So all that said, we do have opportunity to try to improve, you know, traffic calming and things like that through retrofits, you know, because we've already built the road wide enough that people feel very comfortable driving at higher speeds on them. So trying to hit the balance between what we expect the future residents will want, what works for the fire company and the large apparatus, and also, of course, you know, our police capacity, that we can't have a, an officer sitting on every residential street 24/7. We're, we're trying to work through it and make the improvements, but just wanted to kind of get that out there, because there are a few, quite a few mentions of the speed bumps not being effective. So they are temporary, and the real ones are coming.
That street is an accident only?
It's two-way. Okay. Let's move along with this. I guess we need to give an opinion or comment for the Board of Appeals on the variance for the sign.
I don't think the signs are the, are the issue that people who want to comment on.
I don't have any comments on the sign. I do about the site, but nothing deals with the sign.
I'm good with the signs.
Traffic is the biggest concern.
We're good with the sign.
Yeah.
We report to the Board of Appeals a favorable recommendation for the sign variance.
Yes.
Sign only, yes.
That's the only thing. It's coming.
I just want to make it understood.
Right. The Board's task will be to decide about the signage, but really not anything for the site itself.
Well, where can we go now without considering the signage?
Right. So this is the group that's going to be overseeing the site development plan process. So the plans will go out to, first, they'll come back to this group potentially as soon as next month, seeking concept approval. And at that point, the plans, assuming concept approval is granted, at that point, the plans will be circulated to a number of review agencies. So things like stormwater management, erosion and sediment control, a whole host of reviews will, will be ongoing for the next many months. I think, based on the concerns here tonight, I think it will be appropriate to ask the traffic engineer to make a presentation at our upcoming meeting so that they, we can have the experts share their findings and be able to respond to questions about the study and how studies are conducted than any of us would be able to. So I will try to set that up for next month and see if dynamic traffic can send somebody to present the, the final study. It should be finalized by then, and.
Would that be at the Board of Appeals, or would that be at the next Planning Commission?
That would be at the next Planning Commission meeting, yes. So I would suggest just keep an eye on the agendas for the Planning Commission, because this is where they're going to be talking about the site plan itself and the proposed use.
Our next meeting will be October 27th. So we're in time. Question on October 27th.
Jim, I just, I have one question, before Jim. It was brought up many times, as we know. Has it ever been that the traffic study considered to do from Stumptown? And I know it's all intersection-related, but.
Well, the, right. The traffic coming through Stumptown across Amicus would be counted in the intersection at Chevron and Grand.
Okay.
So, right. So that, that would be, that would factor into the, the level of service at that intersection. So if people, if people today are coming from Meads Crossing or Copperfield or Sarah's Choice or Meadowbrook or, you know, any of the homes that have been built over the last 30 years, you know, they're being counted at that intersection. If they're coming, if they're coming across Amicus to get out to Baltimore Street, they're counted in that intersection study.
Thanks, Jim.
Excuse me, Jim. If the chair recognizes someone speaking, could they please come to a microphone?
Thank you, Jim.
Wait till you come to the mic, please.
Yes.
If the people that you just mentioned that would be coming from those other neighborhoods just get to the Taco Bell and go back out, they are not getting counted, though, at that intersection?
They're, right.
Right.
What I was, what I was, I guess, not stating clearly enough is that the existing traffic that's, we're being told is cutting through the Creekside community.
Okay.
That is being counted.
Okay.
At that intersection.
Okay.
But yes, to your point, if somebody comes from Stumptown, visits the proposed restaurant and exits the same way, that would be part of the anticipated routing of the traffic that Taco Bell will generate.
Right.
So the, the traffic engineer bases a, a trip distribution that is, you know, from the site, how many vehicles pull out here and turn right, how many turn left, how many use this access, how many turn which way. And that all factors into their evaluation of the intersections. So now their numbers may not agree to what you think, you know, anecdotally you see driving by your house.
Only because that doesn't also include people that would just go to the Food Lion or to the CVS. Like, it, it just, it just can't include all of that. I mean, it just doesn't seem like an accurate representation of what is actually currently happening. So then I don't see how that would translate to future.
Yes. And when, when using Amicus as a cut-through was, was described, I was envisioning coming from Baltimore Street to Stumptown.
Right.
And not, not to the, not to Food Lion or CVS specifically.
Right. So if we have, now granted, the sizes are different, but there's currently two businesses that fit that qualification. And if that doubles, therein lies the concern.
Yes. But to your point, yes. If somebody's coming from Stumptown, visiting there and going back out the same way, right, that would not have been counted.
It came to my attention, I wanted to let the Planning Commission, my name is Becky Mendenhall. I live on Amicus Street. I wanted to let the Planning Commission know, I was, the sign that's in our neighborhood right now just says that there's a proposed development, and it says Taco Bell. It doesn't make any reference to that access street that would come on Amicus Street. I was able to find that out. I shared with my neighbors the site plan, but that was only two days ago that I did that. None of the neighbors who are here are ones that I spoke with, because they weren't outside. There were at least two or three others who were not pleased and had no idea that that was part of the development plan, that there would be an Amicus Street access. To every, to everyone's knowledge, the assumption was, I believe, that any new business would be similar to the old one and that it would be on and off of 140. So for, you know, wherever people would stand in the neighborhood, I wanted to make sure, for my part, that they were given that knowledge as much as, as I was able to help. So I can tell you, there will be more than what is here. People that are concerned about it and are not wanting that access through our neighborhood. So we'll make, make sure that we let them know about the other opportunity on October 22nd.
27th.
27th here, 22nd for the Board of Appeals, 27th here.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yep. And there, you know, thank everyone for their input on this this evening. Way how we, how we hear and understand how you. How we hear and understand how you feel about projects, so please come to the meetings.
Jim, tilt your mic down towards you a little bit. Yeah, perfect.
All right. Next item on the agenda. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
AVAPCO Off-Site Parking Lot Concept Plan Presentation and Review Pending BZA Case 25, 2/32. About just building a parking garage.
We'll accept that comment. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission. Kelly Schaefer Miller, 73 East Main Street, Westminster, Maryland 21157. I'm here tonight on behalf of AVAPCO. I have with me Mr. Chad Rhindollar, a representative of AVAPCO. We do not have HLS, who will be working on the site development plan with us tonight, but they will be here for additional discussions, and we're hoping that we can explain this one to you pretty sufficiently tonight. I think you will find that this is a fairly straightforward request. And if you recall, in May of 2024, AVAPCO came forward with a Board of Zoning Appeals request for off-site parking at the adjacent parcel to the parcel that's here tonight. That did receive the Board of Zoning Appeals approval and is still planned for parking. The proposal before you tonight is for the adjacent parcel to that. So you can, you can see a bit, I'll say, perhaps not as clearly as we could delineate here, that the proposal is for the parking on this parcel to access into the formerly approved parking lot. And then that then accesses onto Allendale. So this is, in essence, the same request that was before you in 2024. The parking is necessary to accommodate the existing headquarters and office space for employees and visitors to the business. This would be intended to accommodate those. There would be pedestrian access, a walkway provided so that they would walk through this parking lot or along the border, really, of this parking lot, and then cross Allendale just as was proposed with the pedestrian crossings that were a part of the last parking request before you. The plan that is on the screen before you tonight is showing 182 additional parking spaces. The adjacent parking was approved with 88 spaces. I think you will see that number ultimately modified a bit because of the tie-ins of this. If you compare the plans, I think you will see that the adjacent lot will lower in the spaces provided because of the tie-ins from this parcel to the previously approved parking. This property is zoned restricted industrial, and it is surrounded, or it is bounded on all sides of FSK Highway by restricted industrial zone, and on the other side of FSK Highway, it is commercially zoned property. So again, we are here, we are happy to answer any questions that you have. The proposal is to go before the Board of Zoning Appeals on October 22nd to make the special exception request for off-site parking. That is in your code listed as a special exception available to be requested before the Board of Zoning Appeals. So it is our intent to present a case very similar to the original case for the adjacent parcel here because this parking will serve the same needs of the adjacent parcel. We are here and happy to answer any questions that you might have tonight.
So are you adding your additional ADA parking to the other parking lots? I see you have none in here.
The adjacent...
Adding yes for more ADA. I don't know exactly where that's going to be.
This one requires six. I just wonder how many you have in the other one.
I'm going to make a note of that, and we're going to have HLS prepared with that specific information. It is my understanding that usually ADA spaces are supposed to be as close to the facility as possible.
I think that's what it is.
So it is possible that we are accommodating those spaces directly adjacent to the structure, but if not, I will have HLS prepared to answer that specific question when we come back.
I like to make sure it's being done.
Yes, absolutely.
No, the, and just to clarify, so the request is basically, we want to have a parking lot that is on a lot different than the existing headquarters. That's what you're going to go before.
Yes, that is correct. There's a provision in your code that calls out an allowance to make a special exception request when there is standalone parking use on a lot that is not where your main structure is. So that is the provision that we are going forward to BZA with.
I have no questions.
Question?
No, Mr. Chair.
Comments from the floor?
Can McDonald's use the corner of your lot?
We are receptive to cross easement agreements, although I'm pretty sure AVAPCO really wants their parking spaces, so no guarantees.
All right. Okay. Comments for the Board of Appeals?
Pretty straight up.
We're good, Jim.
Those ADAs accounted for.
So the Commission provided consensus to make a favorable recommendation to the Board of Appeals?
Provided ADA parking is available.
You will include that comment.
Yes.
All right. Thank you, folks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Dan, if you can keep my screen up for a minute.
Pardon me?
Talking with our IT specialist. Thank you, Dan.
Next item, preliminary site plan presentation to Intown DPW facilities. I thought we already had...
We had, so it seems very recent, doesn't it?
Yes.
So that was the concept presentation. The concept was much farther developed than your concept plan, the concept plans you typically see. So the preliminary plan was given to you at a previous meeting, basically get the big stacks of paper out of my office, even though we didn't have it on the agenda last month. So hopefully, nothing really has changed notably since the concept plan approval was given, but our code does require that we present the preliminary plan to you and we post the property and so on. So that's where we are tonight. But really, it's very much the plan that you saw, I think, the month before last, was it? But that was considered the concept stage still.
One of the questions brought up, did you add any more parking spaces?
Not yet, no. The initial plan, everything you have so far, still is the same plan that we saw roughly a month ago. We can visit it, we can add spaces.
How many is there now? Refresh my memory. Forty-eight?
It should say it on there if you zoom in, Jim.
Okay, that would be, because you know where it is more than I do in the plan. And we're going to stop sharing my screen and go back to the delegation table, please.
Forty-eight. Forty-eight total parking spaces.
You have a classroom for 40 people, correct?
Yes.
You have 10 people right now working there, not counting any secretaries or supervisors.
That was the plan, to be able to have 10 people inside the building.
I think you need maybe a couple more parking spaces. Yeah, you have a classroom for 40 people. You need parking for them, you need parking for your employees. With that, I'm sure a supervisor is going to move in there, maybe even a secretary. You have 10 now, so right there is 12.
Yeah.
That's 52.
Shouldn't be a problem at all. We can get with civil engineer and everybody and just make sure that there's no reason why we can't. I don't believe there is anything, but we'll verify it, and we can add a handful, just worst-case scenario.
So how many will be there?
Well, I think the best thing to do, we'll have to look at classroom space, employees, get a number from the county, and see what would be the total number at any given time, if we're looking at storm overnight, if there's classes that could be scheduled during that time, fire department, police within the city. And then we can just see what would be the total amount at any given time, obviously. We won't know for sure, but we can ask and figure that out. You know, if it's adding five or 10 more, just to accommodate for employees as well as classroom space, I think that's reasonable.
If you go over 50, you need one more handicap parking also.
Absolutely, yep.
Okay.
Questions? I think the Commission had had a concern about Allendale Lane being one way in, one way out. Only a single means of egress in there. Something after the city, they should have. Well, Avenue or Tavanyan Road or something down the road. I mean, that's a lot of industry, a lot of people. AVAPCO, 20...
Really true.
My concern was, on one means in and out. Yes, we'll see you.
Right. So we can certainly take those comments, work them into the plan the best that we're able, and, you know, or if something else needs to be modified to address the parking concern, you know, we'll figure that out. And in the meantime, continue to work through the review agency letters and address any comments, and hopefully we'll be back before you in the next couple of months with those things tweaked, and hopefully all approval letters to share. I do want to point out that the question about there being, you know, no additional points of egress-ingress on Allendale Lane, that's a pretty heavy lift. So, yeah, I don't know what our, you know, conforming with the comprehensive plan, there's no planned major street connecting Allendale Lane back towards Tavanyan Road or Mill Avenue. Mill Avenue, of course, I guess would, I'm picturing the railroad tracks properly. So, okay.
It would be on the same side of the railroad tracks.
Okay, yeah. Just wanted to picture for a second.
Wouldn't have to cross the railroad tracks on either means.
So, right. But that's, that may be more of a conversation for the comprehensive planning aspect of things as far as, you know, if we want the city to pursue a connection from Allendale Lane to Mill Avenue, maybe more so than a site plan-specific conversation. So, but certainly something we can have the conversation about. But, you know, at this point, that's not in, you know, what's in our comprehensive plans for Allendale Lane to swing away from Baltimore Street and connect to the proposed bypass, not to connect towards Mill.
Looking to safety and welfare, everybody on that. All right. My, I guess my other question is, as far as the city's concerned, the city hasn't approved this yet, right? So where does that fall in as far as the process as final approval and the city not approving the funding?
So, right, the city has not approved funding to construct the building or the site improvements at this point. You know, we have been, our hopes of procuring some grant funding have pretty much been dashed on the rocks at this point. So we haven't found a program that fits this project, and that certainly is a major concern for the project going forward. You know, if something does come up and we get great news, the project could move forward, but the current appetite is that, you know, there's kind of some sticker shock, and without grant funding, the expectation is it's not, it's not going to move forward in the, definitely not the immediate future. We are looking at some other opportunities or options for public works at this point, so, but we have already invested in the site plan, so we would like to see that through to fruition and see what happens with other opportunities. But, you know, until the city's able to secure an additional funding source, it's probably not going to move ahead. So what we're stuck with now is kind of, timing-wise, if we have a site plan approval, that approval is only good for a year. So we may want to get to the point where the project is ready for approval and wait and kind of be in a holding pattern until either some of the other opportunities that are being explored, you know, see how they play out, you know, if the city might have to pivot and move in a different direction. So, but I think, you know, that's going to ultimately be a conversation with the mayor and council also about, you know, the direction that we're going to go. But in the meantime, we want to get the site plan through to the point where we're ready, we've addressed all the comments, and, you know, the last thing will be coming back to the planning commission for approval. And I just don't know if we're going to, you know, if we want to go down to the one-yard line, or if we want to cross the finish line or not based on the timing.
I would prefer, and I think the planning commission would too, that we continue this in the next two steps. Preliminary, separate for final approval, not a one-step cover-all.
Okay.
Read.
My question is, if we were to prove it, how long is that going to last? 10 years? I mean, what's the...
One year.
Every year, one year.
Okay.
They'd have to come back every year to renew that.
Okay.
Twice? I think you could do it.
Two six-month extensions are eligible.
All right.
Right. So we, right, so we may pursue preliminary plan approval.
And then hold.
Get the final site plan submitted within the window that it needs to be submitted in, and then, you know, and again, our preliminary and final are essentially the same plan with a different name. So, right, where we want to put the brakes on until, you know, construction is, you know, 100% final, that's yet to be determined.
Thank you, folks.
And real quick question, just so for the next time we do come. Aside, we have the parking spots and we can revisit that. Is there anything additional that's needed? I mean, right now, we're at a spot, I know we have a lot of information, like we said, we've kind of, we've jumped a couple steps, we've got a little bit more than just a preliminary. You know, if we need to adjust this a little bit and get drawings updated, we can. Or is this kind of a good spot to keep what we have? Do you guys need anything additional from us right now for that next meeting?
What was, from the beginning, was the salt barn, not having a dike or something around that salt barn.
Not having what around it?
A dike or something to protect runoff.
Oh, yes, 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 yes. Yeah, we can double-check on that and just verify, obviously, with the civil engineer, what the plan is on that. And I know we also talked about options and phasing, the salt barn, we have that, you know, that is an option as well, so, but we can find that out for sure for the next time. Make sure we're not missing anything that we could bring with us next time.
Is there a consensus on how many additional parking spaces the Commission would like to see? So we know if we, you know, if we go over a certain additional amount of impervious, the stormwater plan's going to need to be tweaked.
50, if we go over 50, we have to have another ADA, right?
Yeah, but, so it would be however many classroom, people have in the classroom, plus however many people you plan on working there.
Yes.
It'll be over 50 then.
And potentially growth.
And the other thing, too, like we had talked about, what we'll do is, Randy, we've talked about it many times, we'll figure out what the classroom size could potentially be. If it's a matter of the biggest class we might actually see, say, the police department, the fire department, doing training, whoever it might be, is only typically 20, then maybe we just show less seats.
Well, I know he's talked about opening up for the state for water treatment. I know usually we have 40 in those classes.
Okay, perfect, yeah. And that's what I was saying, we'll find out what could potentially be the biggest class, and let's go for that worst-case scenario, make sure that the storm... And the other thing too, like we had talked about, what we'll do is, Randy, we've talked about many times, we'll figure out what the classroom size could potentially be. If it's a matter of the biggest classroom we might actually see, say, the police department, the fire department, doing training, whoever it might be, is only typically twenty, then maybe we just show less seats.
Well, I know he's talked about opening it up for the state for water treatment. I know usually we have forty in those classes.
Okay, perfect, yeah, and that's what I was saying. We'll find out what could potentially be the biggest class and let's go for that worst-case scenario, make sure that the stormwater is adequate for everything within the plan and then we can go from there. I think that's the best way to do it. And we can, we can figure that out offline, I guess, have a lot of stuff going on. That's cool. Thank you, guys.
And we would like to have a tour of the building sometime between now and whenever.
Yeah, we can set that up anytime.
We can fish also, right?
Yes.
New oxygen, yeah, we don't mean this, we mean the practice.
New oxygen.
New oxygen of the building.
Thank you.
Thank you, I'll have a great night.
Thank you. Moving to the end, 20 Town Supply requests for preliminary site plan approval. In case everybody doesn't remember, I think we.
Sorry to keep you out so late.
Had the drawing January 2024.
Twenty-four, okay. That's why I couldn't find it.
So, you probably don't have it, Harry.
Yeah, I got nothing.
Have nothing.
I'm here to listen. Sure.
I have too many papers on the table now.
Cool, thanks, man.
So, as we, as we get started on this one, I will happily point out that all the agency review letters, we have approvals for everything on the checklist. The one thing that would remain pending would be I was not able to find adequate facility certifications, but we do have the opportunity to run them in the final site plan stage. So, that's, that's the only thing I did not find in the previous planning director's files. And we have had a couple of letters come in since then.
Else, before we move?
And with that, yep, turn it over to.
So, you last saw it in January 2024. We've been working through comments. We got held up some environmental stuff, but like Jim said, everything's been addressed now and requesting preliminary approval.
And why are we picking up the water and sewer off of Carnival Drive instead of across the street? Across Antrim Boulevard, isn't there, didn't we run a water main?
There's, there's a proposed project to extend the water main in Antrim Boulevard from where it dead-ends by Antrim Mini Storage out to Tavanyan and kind of get another loop there. You might recall that we had some discussions with another prospective developer on that side of the street to try to incorporate that into that project and it didn't, didn't end up moving forward. So, that is a capital improvement program item. Sewage also stops at Antrim Mini Storage and they actually utilize a private force main to pump back towards the roundabout. So, there's no waste, no sewer line in Antrim Boulevard, you know, proximate to this property. So, that, and let's see.
So, where's the sewer line from Carroll Vista go, up Tavanyan Road?
That is a force main that comes up Tavanyan Road and roughly around Antrim Boulevard is where it switches to gravity flow.
Wendy Hills is forced, right?
Wendy Hills is pumped also, yes. Wendy Hills has its own pumping station, yep. So, this, this will tie in through Hartman Street and the system there where it was stubbed off.
That was all I already had was, we're just requesting that.
All right, let me throw this out then. What's going to happen with Hartman? That could be tied in to Antrim.
When, when concept plan approval was granted, we requested that the developer show a right-of-way or easement across the property to ultimately be able to make that connection. But the developer, the Commission didn't require the developer to build, build out that connection. So, the point of access from Antrim Boulevard will align with the future connection of Hartman Street, but there will be a, and maybe you can fill me in on, I don't remember the linear distance that.
About 200 feet, isn't it?
Where the pavement of the Harvard Store stops.
Hundred feet? Oh, that's better yet. All right. You guys have comments? If not, I'll open up to the floor. Anyone from the floor? Randy, any comments? Okay. All right, then I'm looking for a motion. For a motion.
So, approve.
Second? Second by Bill. Lot of discussion? All those in favor of the motion for preliminary plan approval for Tony Supply, signify by saying aye.
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 Oui, nay? Carrie? Thank you, one step.
Yep, so we'll be, right, we'll be back. Next step is final presentation and then it'll go through the same routine again, but hopefully, again, since our preliminary and final are essentially the same plan, it's going to be just a matter of running the APFO certifications for it. So, I can't imagine we're going to get much in the way of new comments, so should be a quick turnaround.
Thank you, Ken.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ordinance and agreement for none. Jim, or Andrew, any comments?
I would just like to say that I'm thrilled to have Andrew on board. Looking forward to having a seasoned professional planner with us. This will be the first time in my knowledge that, you know, we've had someone who actually has the degree as well as the experience to do this job, so. And I've already spoken with Andrew to try to help get us back on track a little bit, so hopefully for next month, you will get the, the site plan report for the three site plans that we heard tonight. So, I know we haven't been doing that in recent months, so we're going to try to get back on track now that, now that all the seats are full. Looking forward to rolling ahead with things, maybe a little more quickly than we've been able to lately.
Like to have our reports, our packet on the Wednesday before our meeting.
Yes, sir.
You don't have the information, then it doesn't go in the packet. Go on the agenda.
Just a report, I'd love electronic.
Sounds good. I was, yeah.
All right. Discussion on action projects.
I really don't have any updates to share. I think there was only one new comment letter in your packet this month. And, but if anybody has questions, I'll do my best to field them.
Just give us a quick update on Memorial Park. Short, short version.
Revised plan submitted, awaiting comments.
That with the sidewalk or without?
With the sidewalk.
Left half of the sidewalk.
Yeah.
We'll see how that flies.
Construction phases? Anything there new?
So, VAPCO is ongoing, no updates really on the others. Meats Crossing Council did vote to, to accept the infrastructure, so at this point, we're just waiting on, and I do have some of the deeds I need to review for the developer. The developer's attorney drafted them, so they're, they're sitting with the city for review. So, we should be, we are moving ahead on closing out the Meats Crossing subdivision. As I said, council has voted to accept things and now it's just actually getting all the documents ready and getting the mayor's signature on those. Let's see, VAPCO is chugging away on their construction, Recovery 180, construction's ongoing. Let's see.
We surely would like to get the second item off this list.
Yep, so, and that's, yeah.
He's got the time, he's got the time now to do it.
Yep, and that's one we, you know, I guess need to revisit with the mayor and council as far as that public works agreement. So, it's really in the mayor and council's hands if they want to modify that PWA to provide relief on that.
County update, Tiffany. Sorry to keep you here so late, you have to explain him.
Thank you for having me. It's been an interesting evening, so it's been enjoyable. But I will keep it short since it is so late. We do have some master plan updates to this Wednesday. The work groups for the ag work group, the economic development and land use work group and the housing study work group will be presenting the meeting processes to the planning commission at six o'clock Wednesday evening during that meeting. And then next month, November 5th, we will be presenting the reports to the planning commission from those meetings. So, that's all I'll bring to you this evening for the master plan reports and then also I'd just like to say congratulations to Andrew and it'll be very nice working with you in 20 Town.
Thank you, Tiffany.
Thank you. Business, discussion on the 20 Town Community Comp Plan.
Oh, yeah, we have not made progress on outreach to the property owners in the growth area. Tiffany has helped out with providing some data through their GIS service, so we have the contact info. Just haven't managed to get a letter drafted to go out to everybody yet, so hopefully that will happen within the next week or so. And we'll see if that generates some interest from the folks in that, you know, within the growth area. And, you know, hopefully that will be part of our discussion at one of our next meetings. So, Arrow is continuing to make updates to the drafts based on the most recent comments and should be, we want to circulate those, give the Commission, you know, adequate time to review and digest everything before we meet with Arrow again so that we can have, you know, comments ready to provide on the latest and greatest draft.
Meeting with Arrow is October the 21st. And I mentioned to Jim and Andrew that today, on November meeting, it would be nice to have a meeting among ourselves without Arrow. Bring yourself up to speed with what we have, what's been accepted and what hasn't been. Just a time for us to talk among ourselves. Of course, it's be open to the public, but without Arrow. Comments on that, you from meeting, one of you?
I believe it's on the website, but if there, if there are updates that we haven't posted yet, we'll make sure that we have the most recent plan out there.
So, it's, before we meet on, like, a lot of weeks before we meet in November, can we actually get a hard copy of the draft of what we have so far?
We can, we can make that happen.
It's just easier to read. That'd be great.
Business, anybody have anything else?
I was just kind of curious on the status of us getting our attorney back or getting a attorney.
So, we are extending our agreement with Special Counsel Gallow. He's willing to stay on, on a, basically kind of an as-needed basis for things that I sent his way. But the mayor and council have, have not appointed a new city attorney yet.
I kind of miss not having him at the meeting or having representatives at the meeting. It's nice to just turn and ask him a question.
It feels good when you know you've got somebody on your, on your back.
Yeah, anyway.
And, yeah, and that may, you know, the, once a new attorney is appointed, he or she may not be attending meetings on a regular basis. Yeah, certainly they'll need to be accessible to us so that, for instance, tonight's conversation about, you know, the lot reconfiguration of the Tevis property. You know, that's something that, you know, and again, I can certainly run that by Attorney Gallow, but, you know, right, but we may not have an attorney sitting here in the middle every month to be able to just bounce questions off of.
That was nice.
Yeah, it'd be nice for October 27th. We have a four-house. All right, anyone from the floor have any comments? For a motion for adjournment? Bill? Barry? Okay. All those in favor, motion is adjourned, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oui, nay? Carrie? Thank you.